Sam Cretio, Shane Dilly, Veronica Moreno, and I believe Tim will be joining us in a bit. So we got six members and possibly seven online, so we will do our best to keep an eye on all of that today. Thank you. And with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the TMC minute summaries. We have those from July 23rd, 25th, 28th, and 30th.
So moved.
Thank you.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much. RTA next, Mr. Ortega.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the committee, first of all, thanks again for being here. Appreciate you all giving up another Wednesday morning. There's only about, I counted, there's only about thirty-two left, so you're doing well, so, no, I'm kidding, relax. So what I'd like to do is start off by chatting about, everybody freaks out there, right? I know you like each other, but, right? There's a, really, I'm gonna call it a starting point. And so, in order to get the conversation going, I wanted to go back over the revenues and give you a thumbnail sketch of what we've been looking at and what we're thinking and what we recommend. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to James Towell, and he'll go over some of the projections and some of the things that we're looking at for revenue. As you recall, the board's direction has been for us to use the pessimistic level all the way through the entirety of the program. What we found is that in the twenty-five year, this past year, we were actually above the pessimistic level. And so we should probably talk through that. So with that, I'll turn it over to James. Go ahead, James.
Chair. I think we had copies of the cash flow passed out? Are there copies of the cash flow? Do we have a prompt? Appreciate it.
The folks online, I believe, they were emailed to all of you just apparently a few moments ago. Thank you.
Go ahead, James.
So, thanks, Mike. So for the purposes of this exercise, we kind of set aside the pessimistic scenario for revenues, because we've been outperforming those for the last few years. In fact, this year's, or twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-four fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five revenue collections were about ten million dollars over what the pessimistic forecast was. And if we continued with the pessimistic forecast out to twenty-thirty-six, it would still be under what we collected last year. So to try to paint a more realistic picture of where the revenues for TPT would be, we just went straight across basically what we collected last fiscal year. So we can assume, hopefully, that they would be higher than this amount. But for the purposes of this, we'll use the one-twenty-five, five-hundred. And that shows where we can, how much we can spend for element and what we can provide for the roadway to complete RTA current.
James, I'm gonna interrupt you one second. Mr. Dilly, you had a question?
Yes. How can we, how can we change our financial forecast assumptions based off of one or two positive years of performance when we've had the last eighteen years or seventeen years of underperformance? I'm just curious how we come to that conclusion. Thanks.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Good, go ahead, Joe.
So as it relates to the pessimistic forecast update that we received in twenty-twenty-three, his actual collections have far outperformed the projection. So from the time, the place we are now, it does not seem like a realistic place to go. I know that the board has directed pessimistic forecasts to be used, but it actually, it's more in line with the baseline if you look at the collection. So it was a judgment call. That's where we are at the moment. That's where we believe we will be for the foreseeable future. So that's why we chose it.
So, so James and Madam Chair, when we put those, when we put that table out a while back, both to the TMC and also to our board, that showed our forecast amount since two thousand and six and our actuals since two thousand and six, what was that forecast? Was that the pessimistic forecast? Was that the optimistic forecast? What was that forecast?
Baseline forecast.
That was baseline forecast?
If I can help. Shane, it's a good question and one we've really, and by the way, this is not a decision. This is a conversation for you all to consider. That's why we're doing it here. And maybe we develop ultimately between us a recommendation to the board. So if you look at the pessimistic curve, if you will, the projections over the next ten years, which is just the horizon we picked for this exercise, the one-twenty-five million that we picked that we actually received this year or this past year is more than what we're projecting to receive in twenty-thirty-six. The number in twenty-thirty-six is like one-twenty-four-six, I think it was, is what the projection was for that year. And so what I suggested was, there's a couple of different ways to look at this. One is, let's take this flat from now through thirty-six. And when it hits that pessimistic curve, then we start following that trajectory upwards to the end of the plan. That's one strategy. We can go back to the projected pessimistic amounts for the entirety of the conversation. Or we could also take the twenty-five dollars and use those as the starting point, the pivot point, if you will. And then the gradient would go up from there using the gradient from the pessimistic curve. So those are the three thoughts that we were kicking around, Shane. It seemed to me that the, the fact that we've far exceeded the pessimistic, at least to this point, we, I could make the argument that we could keep it flat with no growth going forward. And we would, we would be not as conservative as the pessimistic, but still creeping up on it, at least in that tenth year. So that's really the strategy or the conversation we had, and we're happy to entertain any of our conversations.
If you don't mind, let me just finish my question then. So back in two thousand and six, did the region move forward on the baseline forecast, saying, hey, this is what we're planning? This is what we're going to base all of our expenditures off of? Or did they, did they have the same kind of conversation about a baseline versus a pessimistic versus optimistic? And I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, we put that spreadsheet in front of our board as this is the real picture. We based all of our expenditures off of that, off of that forecast, which I just learned was our baseline forecast. Did we consider a pessimistic and optimistic, you know, options at that point in time? I'm just curious to know, should we have presented to them a spreadsheet that showed the pessimistic forecast? Please help me with that, Mike, if you understand the nature of my question.
Madam Chair, so I wasn't, I wasn't part of the conversation then. I pieced it together based on the information that we have available. It looks like there were three options that were, that were presented at that time, which were pessimistic, baseline, and optimistic. And the board at that time chose the baseline. And so the number that was there that you saw on that, on that spreadsheet was the baseline projection throughout the life of the plan.
Which is what they based their, their plan off of, so that makes sense.
That's correct.
What you're suggesting here, though, is to move off of pessimistic because our region has been performing better than pessimistic.
So sort of, Madam Chair, sort of. I wouldn't say I'm moving off the pessimistic. What I've said is, we know that we received more revenue this last year than was projected under the pessimistic model. And so rather than growing that over the course of the, of the first ten years, because that's when that curve would intersect with the current level, I just said, keep it flat, assuming no growth until it hits that pessimistic gradient. And that's probably in about the eleventh year or so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just pivoted away from him, Bill, so I wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Okay. The, two questions. Baseline average percent of growth of revenue projection, what was it on RTA Next? And I know you've got a flat line with no growth now, but that's based on the RTA Next revenue projections. And that also had a percentage of growth, which was different than the percentage of growth that we were looking at for RTA One. What was that one and what, what was the pessimistic on this one?
Madam Chair, I'm not sure I understand your question exactly, Bill. Are you suggesting the, the rate of change in the pessimistic versus the rate of change in baseline?
Yeah, annual growth of revenue. It goes up two percent a year, four percent a year, six percent a year, something like that.
It varies a little bit. We've got that. We can at least muddle through that.
I'm really looking for the comparison between what the old baseline was, which I believe was considerably steeper than what the projection at the pessimistic was this year. I'm trying to get a sense of how much are they varying?
I understand. James, do you have that?
I don't have that.
Okay. So, so we can get that for you. So think of it this way, and I actually drew it on my whiteboard. I should have taken a picture and brought it down. So if you, if you think of the way that the curve starts, it starts in twenty-three. That was the date or the timeframe that was used for the projection. And that was outlined as a, you know, three gradients, right? The pessimistic, baseline, and optimistic. So all we did is we looked at what the pessimistic forecast was for twenty-five, compared that to the actuals in twenty-five, and that's the hundred and twenty-five million. But then what we did is, what I suggested is, since we know we're already at that level, at least we have been, we take it flat until it hits that gradient for the pessimistic, and then we go up. Okay. Now, the other, as I mentioned, the other thought, which I think I'm not recommending, but we could consider is, we use the twenty-six, the twenty-six number, which would be the, we would recommend the one-twenty-five, and use the same gradient going up as the pessimistic, so that the same percent change would be, would apply to each year after that. I'm not recommending that. I think that would be, that's, that would make me nervous. But I think this one is more in line with that. But it also factors in the, the actuals. And that's really what I was trying to do, is show you the picture of what the actuals are looking like for the twenty-five year and beyond.
Well, thank you. And I think our concern has been, I think, is the TMC, that we're not simply increasing revenues in order to make sure that we can cover whatever expenditures we're projecting and that we're giving our, we're making a recommendation to the RTA board that we believe is achievable and realistic, and then we can base our projects around that. Being flat is something that gives me a little more confidence than seeing an increase and having it for only ten years, I think, combined into a way that makes me more optimistic that these are, these are revenue projections when we get to the one-point-two billion-ish, that is a number that is something we can actually, in good faith, recommend an expenditure program in line with these revenues. It's from my perspective.
So if I could just add that the baseline forecast in twenty, in two thousand and six, I believe it was about two-point-three percent. And that's similar to what we've, we've used now. We've stuck with that, that amount. So we're still in the two-and-a-half percent range.
Shane? Shane, he keeps pointing out you got your hand up. I think he is guilty that he's brought Australia today and you're not here.
Yeah.
You'll be making it up.
Mike, I think you did that intentionally, Mike. I don't know how to get even, but that's a hard one for me, being down here.
We'll think of something.
Hey, just, just quick. I don't have the other spreadsheet in front of us that we presented to the council on, on the, the actuals, but were there a lot of ebb and flows? Were there a lot of, you know, from one year to the next, did you have peaks and, and valleys? Because a constant projection like this, I definitely feel more comfortable with this. If we're gonna move off of pessimistic,
Right.
I feel more comfortable going with the flat line like this. However, it doesn't account for peaks and flows between years. And so I just,
Recession.
I just want to make sure that we're thinking about that as well.
Thanks, Shane. We're looking, we're finding it. Thank you.
So Madam Chair, the, the only real dip in the actuals was in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine. Yes, right, exactly. And so from that point forward, though, there was a slow but steady increase. We never had a dip like that. We never saw another dip, like we didn't oh-eight, oh-nine.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I think the flat, because one of the concerns we'd had, what was that? We were also projecting a three percent, my recollection, annual population growth, too, that we are nowhere with it. And we're looking to keep this flat now as well.
Does that answer your question, Shane?
It does. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I, I feel more comfortable with the flat line approach then.
Thank you.
Thanks personally.
Appreciate that, Madam Chair. If there's no other questions on this, we're gonna set this spreadsheet aside for just a minute. We're gonna come back to it, because it's got some other information on there. We're gonna set that aside. And then what I'd like to do is turn it over to Jim DeGruy to give us some information. One of the things that we talked through was the arterial reconstruction and rehabilitation. And so the conversation there is a little more robust, if you will, in terms of, we're really gonna focus on rehabilitation. I think that gives us more flexibility, more options, but we've also defined that. And so what we're presenting to you, and you'll have that up, you should have all had that in your packet that was emailed this morning, so you'll have that. So that's, that's the first part. But the second piece I want to draw your attention to, it could be that some of the jurisdictional partners do not have the same need for arterial rehabilitation. And so we've added a safety component. So we've said it's, it's arterial rehabilitation and safety improvement to give you more flexibility in terms of the types of improvements that you could make on the, on the regional system. So that'll turn it over to Jim, and he can walk us through the rest of that.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Manager. The, what I've provided to you is a description of what the arterial road pavement rehabilitation and safety improvements element would look like. This is in the same format that we have in the administrative code for RTA One. What it does basically is it describes that we will be limiting it to arterial roads as identified on our functional classification map. That's the third page in your, in your packet. There is the regionally adopted functional classification map. We also have an outlet that if the local jurisdiction has its own major streets and routes plan that identifies functionally classified arterials, they can use that instead. So it gives you the opportunity to use either the regional or a local map. What we do is we limit the pavement rehabilitation. We're using the term rehabilitation because reconstruction implies a much more involved process. What we're looking for, though, is an improvement that has at least a life of ten years or longer. So it could be an overlay. It could be something more extensive. It's up to the jurisdiction to decide that. They're, they're basically budget bound. But we also acknowledge that in addition to the pavement work, there is an obligation of the Americans Disabilities Act to do the curb access ramp. So those would be the two components of the, of the rehabilitation element. And further, we also identify safety improvements, because we know some jurisdictions have roadways that are in, in, in good condition but have safety needs. So we've identified a safety component here that includes the addition of turnbays. Again, it's limited still to the arterial road network, but allows other improvements for safety purposes. And beyond those that are identified in here specifically, if a jurisdiction goes out and does a road safety assessment, it could open up other treatments that might be not named here. We've limited or tied this to a forty-two million dollar a year amount. I know we've seen some different numbers. This is based on forty-two million dollars. What we're proposing here is to distribute those funds based upon a combination of population and current HERF distribution. So on the second page, what I've got is a table that shows the different distributions. If you were to look at it based on, on HERF, that's the top set of numbers. Regionwide, we collected in fiscal twenty-five, a hundred and, almost a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty million dollars, and it was distributed to the jurisdictions accordingly. One of the things that we noted was South Tucson, the Tahano-Adam and Pasco-Yaki tribe did not receive a whole lot of money. So what we did was began looking at how we would distribute it based on a minimum of one percent, which there is language in the statutes already that speaks to a one percent minimum distribution. We'd apply that to the, to those three entities and then divide through the rest of it proportionately. So that's the, the first distribution grouping. The second is if we looked at it being distributed by population, which is the second grouping. And then again, also with the one percent minimum to South Tucson, Tahana-Adam, and Pasco-Yaki. And, and then the final distribution is basically weighting them evenly, fifty-fifty split based upon population and on HERF distribution. So that's what we're proposing and would like your feedback.
And I, I think what I'd like to do for the discussion right now, if we can, and Sam, I do see your hand up. If we could bifurcate for a moment the concepts of the payment rehabilitation before we start looking at the formula of how the money's being distributed. I think, because I think one of, I wanted to check with some of our jurisdictions. I think what we heard before, and as you know what we're looking at with this ten-year RTA one-point-five, whatever it is now, is the, making sure that there's something for everyone within the region to ensure that we're representing all of the jurisdictions. And we thought that the payment preservation, payment rehab is a way to do that and make sure that there's something for everybody. Looking at this without looking at what the dollars are, does the language appear to meet the needs from all the jurisdictions? I'll let you noodle that a second. I'm sorry. Sam?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to let you know that I have to step away for another meeting for a bit, but I will be back.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Christina, no, no Tim, no Tim, no Sam. It's all you. And you don't get three votes.
Same.
Yeah. Shane, I'm sorry, sir. Yes, sir.
If there's somebody else. So if, help me understand, Mike, this is the concept of, of spreading a little bit of love around the entire region during this, this ten-year process to get the rest of RTA One complete? Is that, is that correct?
Madam Chair, yes. Shane?
So I, I had thought, so I think the language is great. I appreciate it being broadened, because I know that each jurisdiction might be in a little bit of a different spot by way of their pavement preservation program. And, and this certainly could help offset current costs that are coming through their, their own HERF programs. And so I think this is, I think this is great. Others will likely weigh in on that. But I think this probably works fine for the, for the town of Saladita. The, the concern that I have, though, is that I would have thought that this would have been a component of the RTA hybrid ballot question that we put to the, to the voters. So that the tax itself that they would be approving would be sufficient to cover this spattering of pavement preservation that this, this, in and of itself would not come from the PAG region funds, the tip. So I think that's, that's where I'm, I'm a little sideways on this. But the language itself, Madam Chair, seems to hit the spot for me. Thanks.
Okay. And I think Shane, I think it is in, but, Mike.
So we're gonna, we're gonna straighten you up, so you're not sideways anymore.
Thank you.
This is, you're welcome. This is part of the future tax. This is not part of the regional money. The regional money is separate from this. We'll talk about that here in a minute. But this, this, this proposal, if you will, would be a part of the future tax ask.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So I appreciate that clarification. It's what I thought, and I just want to make sure, because I think what Shane just asked threw me off a little bit. So these monies that we're talking about here in this document would be strictly from the half cent. And then PAG regional monies would be available and distributed, and we're not gonna talk about that right now? We're gonna talk about that in a minute?
Yeah, we're gonna talk about it.
Okay.
But it's not that.
Okay. So as far as the distribution of monies, I think that it's a fair distribution. The one thing that I would question, and I realize it's probably, it might be a moot point based on the population numbers, but we do have more accurate population numbers than the twenty-twenty census, and that now is almost six years old. And some jurisdictions have grown more than perhaps others. And I think it would be only fair and right to look at more recent and more accurate numbers.
And I just, I want to clarify, just to make sure that we're all hearing the same thing about the dollars, that what we're looking at is a half-cent proposal that we think, half-cent for ten years. And that would cover all of the remaining RTA projects, about thirty-five million a year for transit, and then the forty-five million a year for the roadway arterial rehabilitation, as we're seeing described here. And those are all things that would be covered in the half cent, correct?
That's correct, Madam Chair. So let me, let me go back to the point that Terry made. Are you, were you finished? He wasn't finished.
No, I'll go after. I just want to make sure that I jump back in. Actually, I'll, I'll go now. It's okay. So I thought we were gonna come back to this
We are.
page here, but since it was brought up, if, if we're talking about transit being increased to thirty-five, I'm not really sure that that's something that we would support. I'm not sure where the,
Thirty-two.
where we went from thirty-two to thirty-five and why, and whether or not there's even support from that, from everybody on that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll get to that in a second. So let me, let's just go to the, the formulaic distribution of dollars. And, and we will make sure that the population is updated to the latest information we have. And we'll go through that exercise quickly to do that. What I wanted to point out, though, is that in, in these scenarios for funding, pretty much all of them could be updated annually in terms of the latest distribution for HERF, you know, from the previous year, latest information on population. So we could do that. I know, I believe it was Mayor Post or Mayor Murphy that had asked about updates to the population numbers, particularly because of the changes that you just outlined, Terry. So whichever of the three scenarios or some other scenario, if it's tied to population or HERF distribution, I think we can update those fairly frequently, is my gut. And I would recommend that we do that, so that way on an annual basis, everybody knows. And that's how we could, we could do that distribution. I do think that it's important to tie that down so that there is clarity upfront as to how those dollars would be, would be put forth. So just throw that out.
Do you need, excuse me, do you also, when we look at that, come back and get a recommendation on the one percent to lock that in as well as?
I would, yes. So, so one of these scenarios or another one that you all decide would be better, if we could get some direction on that. We don't have to do it right this second, but just before you all leave, just so that we're not, at least I have something to take, take forward.
Increase and incorporate it and make sure there's a minimum, is what I heard.
That's, that's the expectation. It's mainly because there's not, there's not two additional votes at the city, so they're always.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to suggest on the functional classification map, the same approach, right? That it'd be updated, because the version here, and I don't know if this is most recent, is twelve years old. And so whatever the most recent version is, as updated, right, periodically. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if, if I may, I just wanted to point out that we do have the, the sentence immediately below the highlighted sentence that I think addresses the, the percentages. We do contemplate going back and looking at making adjustments with each successive. We do contemplate going back and looking at making adjustments with each successive tip cycle. I think that would be the appropriate time to do it as we're looking at the money. We also look at the proportions. And, you know, we do certainly plan on being able to accommodate updated regional arterial functional classification plans. That's clearly our desire.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Chair, let's go back to the big spreadsheet, the one that has the blue line on it. And I'll go through that. But by the way, Jim had already printed these at 42 million. But the number on the other spreadsheet is 37 million. We just didn't want to throw all those away. So just know that it's the same percentage, but the number is different. Okay? Are you following me? So this, this sheet shows 42 million, 42 million distribution. This sheet shows 37 million. I just wanted to show that. Point that out.
Oh, I see.
37. 37. Yeah, so 37. And I'm going to walk you through why that's the case. Okay? So when, when we first started this, when I started, we're really looking, we adjusted the amount that was necessary for the completion of RTA 1. And so I needed more, we needed more to finish RTA 1. And so I basically reduced the number to 40, so from 42 to 40. And then I took 3 million and put that into the categoricals. So let me, let me walk you through the spreadsheet. And we're going to go into a lot more detail here in a minute. So we start off with a 125.5. We've already talked about that revenue stream. The transit at 35 million. And what I did there, Terry, was basically looked at. We were at 688 total. And so I did is I moved that up to 700. I just did that based on some of the feedback that I'd gotten. Happy to take whatever feedback I get from you all, but that's basically the decision or the recommendation, suggestion, I should say. I'll come back to that. I'll come back to that. I'll come back to that. But I just wanted to let you know that's how that came about. The rehab and safety, I just mentioned that, that is at 37 million. So we distribute that across the region. 3 million would go, and by the way, these are annual amounts. So you have to multiply it times 10 or times 20 if you go all the way to 20 years. 3 million would go to categoricals, and then the remainder would go for the RTA 1. So you can see that about 50, a little better than 50 million is needed annually in order to finish RTA 1. Okay? So the dollars down below are the, what we're expecting, the annual distribution of what we call the PAG regional money, both the HERF and the STBG. Okay, which is right at about 40, $45 million. And those are the dollars that we've not addressed yet, we've not talked about. But those would be available for all other, all other needs in the region, you know, for basically starting in '20. We're going to start in '27, but keep in mind that there are federal dollars and federal projects that we have already designated some of that money to go forth through '29. So I think there's like 10 million, 15 million, and 7 million. So it's not the full 45 in those first few years. But then after that, it's the entirety of the 45 million. There's still dollars there, but it's just not the 45 million. And I'll show you, we'll show you how that, how that all stands out. Okay? So, okay, so a couple of things to think about. This, this program or this thought here assumes that the 140 million that was put forth towards RTA 1 completion out of the regional money from the tip is no longer needed for RTA 1. Those dollars are now freed up for the region. Okay? So that starts immediately, well, in '27. And we'll walk you through that and what that looks like. But that's important because what that does is it in essence increases the amount of TPT that's necessary to finish RTA 1 by a minimum of that 140 million. So if you remember when we were looking at the, we'll call it the old RTA Next Plan, the original RTA Next Plan, there was a line item for completion of those four projects. And that was around 240 million in that ballpark. Okay? Well, that number is now grown, not just for the four, but for the completion of RTA 1. Because we no longer have that extra 140 million to come into, into the, into the completion of RTA 1. Okay? I wanted to make sure we're clear because the number seems to jump, and it does because we're in essence no longer funding it out of the regional money. Okay? All right. So with that, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Rick. And Rick will go over what this translates into for the plan as a whole.
Hey, Mike, can I ask you a question while they're passing that out?
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
Madam Chair, thank you. So Mike, did I understand you correctly that the, that under the extension plan, the tax, the proposed tax will pay for all of the completion of RTA 1? Or are you telling, are you saying that we're going to have that $140 million that's also going to go towards helping to complete RTA 1? You talked about those PAG monies being freed up, but then I heard you say that they're going to go back and help complete RTA 1. I'm just a little confused.
I'm sorry, Shane, if I, if I.
No, no. It's on, it's on me. It's one of the disadvantages of being virtual.
Yeah, I hear you. So let me, let me make sure we're clear so that you, you all kind of take away what we're trying to do here. So when we, the original RTA Next Plan, the original plan that was taken out for public comment that was voted on by the board.
Yeah.
That, that plan had about 240 million, I think it was 236 or something like that, but 240 million that was for the completion of the four projects. Okay? All right. That same plan assumed that there was 140 million to complete RTA 1 out of regional money. So that, that plan made an assumption that the regional monies through '29 would go towards the completion of RTA 1. Are you with me?
I'm following. I'm following.
So what this plan does, and this is what I think is important, is this plan assumes that the TPT, the new tax, will fund all of the completion of RTA 1. And so that frees up those 140 million that were plugged into the tip out of regional money for use by the region for other projects.
Okay, period, right? That 140 is not going to be somehow wrapped back into completing RTA projects?
That's correct. That's exactly correct. That's correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Madam Chair and Mike, are we going to see at some point how that 505 million gets applied to the existing RTA projects that need to be finished? Do we have that, that breakdown?
Madam Chair, yes, Carmine. As a matter of fact, I think Rick's going to go over some of that. And you'll be able to see how those dollars, how it all kind of shakes out. So go ahead, Rick.
Madam Chair, members of the committee, the handout I gave you. So I'll draw your attention to one aspect up at the very top where, and this is just a reconciliation that James and I'll get together on for the exact amount. I've got 500 million instead of 505. That's just discrepancy between the two of us in making sure that number matches. But to your point, Carmine, we're showing that the allocation, 500 million for completing the plan has broken out 490 against all the roadway element projects. So this includes the scope modification project in addition to the active ones that are ongoing and that we're moving forward with as we speak. So for simplicity purposes, just bundled that all into one line item instead of each individual project breakout programming that got overly complicated. 10 million, you've heard us talk about it in the past, for completion of the categoricals to fulfill the ballot commitments that we've identified. That's the small amount that we've gone through, calculated, and recognize we can invest in that primarily in the bike facility aspect of it. So we'll be planning and recommending investing that. To the point Shane brings up, then moving into the new roadway projects. And it moves over a column. So the first three columns on your left kind of represents the first 10-year portion of the plan, whereas the second set of columns represents then years 11 through 20. So we advance the projects that are highlighted, Sonoran Corridor, Cortero, Lambert-Channan, Deoeste, Thornidale, La Vita, Valencia, and Pima Mayan Road. Those would be periods one and two, or the first 10 years. The money shown there represents the regional allocation that Mike's talking about. So I'll show you the total later on, but it comes out to roughly about $426 million. That equates to the 40 to 45 million in regional funds that we've got for a 10-year duration. Okay? So that's showing then the regional funds advancing the plans, or I'm sorry, the projects that have been identified that were previously labeled as next, and using that regional allocation, obviously going along with the complementary RAC funds, impact fees, grant funds that had already been identified before. So no other projects that would move forward in the first, the first half of the plan. If you transition to the second page, up at the very top is the whole breakout of the categoricals that we've previously used. James had showed a $30 million allocation. We took that and separated that into five in the active safety and ADA, and then 25 into the environmental. And just as I called that as a non-assigned allocation for the points of this discussion. Working down, we heard Mike talk about the arterial rehabilitation and safety. So we've got a couple of clarifying notes that align with Jim's overview that he provided at the 370 mark. Moving down, environmental, as I said, is the 25. And then moving into the transit, that breaks the distribution out and increases it to the 35 million annual as provided in Mike's overview. And then continuing on down, the only other thing to note is that because we're calling out the specific RTA aspects of it now, that unnamed $40 million allocation that was previously identified as overlap, that's now been eaten up into there. So we don't need to double count it. We added that as portioned into the arterial rehabilitation to give it that full amount. So you can see as you look at the grand total of funding, we've got the 1.25 billion that comes from the TPT going to those categories I laid out. The companion is the regional funds at approximately 426, which is between that 40 and 450, giving us that target in there and providing then what we'd be able to move forward to in the detail. Mike, is there anything else you would like to add or clarify? And if not, I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Rick. Appreciate that. So Madam Chair and members of the committee, this is basically that, that second column, the committed non-RTA dollars, which is the regional money. It's basically a suggestion to show you how those dollars could be spent. But we're not married to it. I mean, as far as the region and the process to identify those could be the competitive process going forward. But I wanted to show you how those projects could work to be funded as starting the framework of the RTA Next Plan. That's all that that is, just to give you an idea of if we were to go out and have a conversation with folks, you could say that is in the first period, and here's how we would fund it. So again, I'm looking at combining all of the resources for the conversation, not necessarily for the voter ask, but that'll be up to the board. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So I think I now understand. I was really confused there for a few minutes. So it sounds like you're making a suggestion, not necessarily a recommendation, but you're showing a possibility of how the regional dollars could be used in the first 10 years. Okay?
Madam Chair, that's correct. It's just, what I wanted to do is give you the broader picture of all, all those dollars and how the magnitude of the plan could be funded if the region chose to do it that way. That's all.
Mike, just going back to my, my prior question on the, you know, 500 million for the RTA 1 project, seeing that breakdown, right? And I would think, is the intent in the plan that goes to the voters to show each of those RTA 1 projects and a dollar amount being allocated to them? So I think that would be important.
Madam Chair, Carmine, I didn't understand. I understand it now. I apologize. I wasn't following you earlier. So the 500 million that's up on the top, at the very beginning, lumps all of that together right now. So the conversation we're having internally is what should be shown on the ballot? And what should just be lumped into, this is to complete RTA 1? I haven't, I don't have a thought on that right this second. What I do know is the rescoping of the projects, those need to be shown. And I think that we need to go, go into some detail to show what those, those four projects are as a minimum. By the way, it's likely we could have as many as six rescoped now, those four original, the City of Tucson grant, our First Avenue grant to River, and potentially the grant UP. I think those, those make sense based on, on the needs of the jurisdictions. So whatever those are and whatever we finish with in terms of identifying those projects need to be listed. Then the conversation becomes, do we have a list of the rest of the projects there? Or do we just lump it into completion of RTA 1? I haven't gotten to that point yet, to be honest with you. But I'm open to suggestions if you think they should be listed.
Madam Chair and Mike, I think regardless of how it then ultimately gets decided to be shown on the, on the ballot, us seeing that, right, in this forum, and the RTA Board seeing that so that there is clarity in terms of this number is sufficient to complete these projects in this way. I think just wanting that level of assurance.
Want to be clear, because we have a lot of paper going around, I think I heard you, that the narrative about the arterial that indicated the 42 million was an early document. We just didn't want to reprint it, but it's 37 and 5, right? And the 5 went to the environmental.
Madam, Madam Chair, if you look on the second page, that arterial reconstruction or rehab, excuse me. And by the way, we do want to be deliberate in that term, rehabilitation versus reconstruction. I think that gives us some more flexibility. So the arterial rehabilitation and safety element, that's the 37 million. That's correct. Yep. So that's how that basically shakes out at this point. So.
John?
Madam Chair, Mike, can you clarify the totals? You've got a total of 3 billion now? For, you know, the 1.2 plus the 1.8. So are we assuming some growth in the second 10 years? Is that what we're saying?
So thank you, John, Madam Chair. Not exactly. So I think what's going to have to happen is depending on the use of the regional money, we may have to, to reduce the number of projects in the second half. So it's going to be a function of how many projects we want to take out of this to fund out of regional, regional money to balance this. And so what we really focused on was the first 10 years, where we gave you a picture of the next 10 years so you can see what, what the magnitude is. But depending on the use of the, of the, of the regional money, because it could be that the regional money is not used for one of these projects. Or the region decides, the jurisdictional partners decide through the tip process that it's different than what we've outlined here. Well, then there would have to be a modification going forward. Now, what gets tricky is we do have to outline this in the 20-year plan. So we're going to, we're going to make this balance, right? But with the expectation, assuming that a 10-year ask is approved, that we would go back to the voter with an amendment or supplement to make those modifications based on the, the needs of the second 10 years.
Then Shane, thank you. Sam, you're frozen.
I am.
I am.
So Sam, can you? Yeah, then Shane, you're next. But let me, let's let Sam, if we can get, thank you.
The audio must have cut out. Um, I'm back if you can figure that out. And I, I'm a little bit late to the conversation, but Mike, I wanted to ask, how did you come up with the totals for the transit elements? Did you just take, take the breakouts and multiply them out by 10 years? Or can you provide some more clarity on that?
Chair, basically all we did is we took the original 688, added 12 million to it, which is less than a million a year. And that came to the 700 million, divided that by two and then distributed to each of the element, each of the breakdowns. But for the maintenance of effort or maintenance of streetcar, just basically took that in half and then also the, the HCT.
Okay. Jeff.
Thanks, Madam Chair. So, um, going back to the, the sheet that did show the 37 million rehab and safety, uh, that was the first sheet we looked at. That, the way I understood that, that 37 million was, was TPT dollars. And then the, the regional monies was, were the two rows down below. And those would be allocated out according to a, a model of population versus, and also HERF. The, but now I'm, I guess I'm confused because now I'm, I'm hearing that maybe some of those regional dollars are going to be put into the, into the plan. And that it sounds like maybe those regional dollars are going to be the rehab safety monies. I mean, I guess I'm, I was clear until I saw this sheet that you have up on the screen. So, again, very clear. So, so are, is that 37 million from TPT? Or is it from regional dollars?
Yes, the 37 million is from TPT.
Okay. And then the regional dollars that are put onto this sheet are the, they are truly regional. So they, they really wouldn't be an allocation by population that, you know, then to the, or by HERF to the, the region. They would be used within this plan for these projects, the RTA Next projects.
Yes, that's correct. They would be distributed based on a, I'm going to use the term separate process, which is competitive. It's usually a call for projects, uh, which could then be, and again, my suggestion was just based on the RTA Next projects. But you could deviate, the region could deviate from that based on that process. That's all.
Can I answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, well, uh, it does go back to how we, we would present this. I mean, so we're, we're saying it would still be a, a competitive process. The agencies would bring their RTA Next types of projects forward in a competitive process for those, uh, those, uh, HERF, uh, PAC dollars. So, uh, so they're not necessarily allocated then by jurisdiction if it's in the competitive process or, and they're not necessarily for arterial reconstruction. I'm not, I'm not hearing that. So I, I thought originally that 37 or the, the bottom of that sheet, which it was like 45, around 45 million or so, was going to be allocated by, by percentage. So, um, no, I, I gotta admit, no, I'm confused. I really am. Because I, I'd heard that those dollars were going to be allocated by population. Now, they may not be out, or allocated by population. It would be applied for RTA.
Hey Jeff, hey Jeff, maybe, maybe the best way to describe it or to think about it is they're two separate processes, two separate conversations. The, the, the top band, if you will, that has the 37 million, that's the conversation around the TPT. And those dollars, the, the 37 million is what I was suggesting could be distributed by population or HERF distribution or combination. The, the second band that's down below, those are the regional dollars. And the regional dollars would be or could be, would be subject to a regional process for distribution of those dollars. But what I did, and I did it to try to explain the thought in a holistic manner, not to confuse you all, was to show what types of projects could be funded out of the, out of that regional allocation and how many could be funded over the next 10 years. That's all I was trying to do. So I'm not, I'm not necessarily suggesting or dictating to you where those dollars would be used. I'm just giving you an example, illustrative example of how they could be used or allocated over the next 10 years. That's all.
Okay, Madam Chair, Mike, that, that helps. So the 37 million would be allocated to the jurisdictions and then the, the regional dollars would be competitive and could be applied to RTA One, or Next, I should say, types of projects.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Shane, you with us? There you go.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I, Mike, I, I've, I've felt a bit protective of the use of RTA regional dollars for the use of, you know, to, to, to offset these RTA projects. Because, I mean, the whole concept is that you're going to the voters and you're saying, hey, we want to deliver these projects and we're asking you to offer us a tax to get it done. And, and so I, I have sensed over the last, over, over my time with this amazing group, a bit of a reluctance or reticence on the, on the part of the board to continue to sweep PAC monies into the RTA process. They've done it, but it's been, it seems to me to be a bit of a reluctant move. And they're anxious to get done with the sweeps. Can, can you or somebody provide me a little context or history as to, you know, if, if we're not putting PAC dollars to these important corridor projects, what would we be using them for? Why is there this general sense of protecting those dollars for something else? On the surface, I, I, I completely subscribe to, you know, putting projects in front of the voters. They bless it. They give us authority to tax to get it done and we use that money to get it done. I, I, I think that's so clean and simple. When we start introducing PAC dollars, it seems to complicate it. Maybe, maybe operationally, but certainly emotionally. And, and so I'm, I'm a little, I feel myself wanting to be protective of using PAC dollars just given the, the history of the conversations that I've been privy to at the, from the board. On top of that, I, I realize, you know, this plan is going to look extremely different. And the situation that we find ourselves in and in getting something to the board, if we don't interject PAC dollars. So, you know, what does this plan look like if PAC monies completely go away? What kind of decisions are we having to make as a region? If the first 10 years of a 20 year plan is used to finish RTA One with a spattering of, you know, these, you know, pavement reconstruction type projects and, and transit? What do we, what decisions do we need to be making to help you deliver a plan to the, to the, you know, to the board? If we don't have PAC dollars interjected in here? Thank you.
So I'm starting to think, Shane, Madam Chair, that my job is to confuse you all. And that's what I, so I don't pay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure because as long as I'm getting that. I love it, brother. That's it, brother. That's it. All right, so. Well, that's okay. That's okay. So, so Shane, let me, let me take a stab at this and I'm going to, I'm going to ask us all to take a little bit of a step back. So when, when we first started with the RTA, I'm going to call it the RTA Next Plan. That's the plan that was sent out to, for public comment. There was not agreement on that, at least not support on the part of the board. As a matter of fact, I believe that was a split vote even to send it out to the public. And so what I basically did is dissected all of the challenges that folks were putting out on, on, on the table and tried to come up with something that might make sense, right? And what I kept hearing, uh, first and foremost from, I think you're Mayor Shane, I've heard it from, from Jeff's mayor and from Mayor, Mayor Romero was that the completion of RTA One had to be solidified. We had to figure out what that plan looked like. And we needed to have that in front of them. So that's when I brought that, we'll call it the harebrained idea one of sweeping all of the regional money through 36 to fund RTA One. It, it, no one liked that plan. I understand that, but it was a plan and it was a way of getting that accomplished. Okay? Then the general put forth his presentation. It became clear that people want good asphalt, good roadways to drive on. And so started thinking about the pavement rehabilitation component, not only in terms of, of distribution across the region, but also to address what the public needs or wants based on that, on that feedback. And so started to go down that, that path. At the same time and parallel to that, the conversation around transit and the need for us to figure out a way to fund transit. Hence I showed you all the distribution of, of the transit dollars and so forth. Okay? So if you stop there, the, the, the true value of an RTA Next ask is really heavily favored to the city when you go to the voter because it's the completion of RTA One. And, and that's, that's very difficult when you're out asking the voter of the region to support a, a completion of RTA One for all the reasons that we've talked about in terms of why that hasn't, hasn't happened. And it puts the voters in the outlining areas at a, quite frankly, a disadvantage of saying, well, what's in it for me? Okay? So that's when I said, what if we look at all the regional dollars as well? And, and, and when I say regional dollars, I'm talking specifically about the PAC dollars, the, the HERF and the STBG. And so then I started thinking, okay, if we get 45 million annually to the region, maybe it makes sense to put those dollars towards RTA Next-like projects. That then you as, as jurisdictions that are not the City of Tucson could go out and say, this plan is of value to us because we have an opportunity to have these other projects now moved forward and potentially even moved, moved forward better than if we were to just go with the original RTA Next Plan. Okay? So the, the, the discussion chain was really, at least in my head, was how do we make this a holistic package that we can talk through and then ultimately translate to the voter? It, it is not about sweeping the PAC dollars. It is not about any of that other than to show. And, and, and again, the, the plan that was put forth to you was really an example of how that $426 million could be used to fund projects in other jurisdictions that are in the RTA Next Plan. Now, I've made an assumption that if in there, if the projects are in the RTA Next Plan, that they have some priority for you as, as jurisdictional partners. And so I put them here, but you know, as I said earlier, that process, the development of that, that tip and, and the process for the distribution of those dollars could be a decision that's, that's made annually based on an annual review of the tip. So I, I understand why, I'm not sure I understand the protection of the PAC dollars other than to say to you in the, in, I think it was 17 or 18, whatever the years were, the decision by the board was made to, to use all of the PAC regional money to fund RTA One. This plan goes to the voter and asks the voter to, to finish funding those and frees up the regional money for other projects. Now, the last thing I'll, I'll, I'll leave you with is if you look simplistically at the plan, basically the, the 10 year plan, the only thing that I really did was I added the 37 million, call it 40 million for arterial reconstruction in lieu of projects. And so if you, if you think of it simplistically, I just swapped out the regional money, the, those dollars, it's almost the same amount. And you could put those regional project or regional money into the plan for the projects and do the same the other way, if you will. That's not what I've suggested, but if you think of it, we basically expanded the, the, the whole program by 40 to 45 million a year. That's, and that money goes towards the regional allocation, I mean, to the pavement rehabilitation. Shane, does that help?
Yeah, I, I, I understand. I appreciate that. So, are, are you, are you seeing an opportunity to help our, our board with the question? Because it keeps getting floated out there a little bit. Even the last board meeting, we had, I think it was Board Member Hines, you know, even talk about putting forward a one cent tax, right? And, and I, I don't know. Again, I get back to what appears to have been a, a history of reluctance in, in, in taking PAC dollars and putting it to RTA projects. And I'm wondering, what else would this region do with those PAC dollars? Why, why is there that, why do I sense that with the board having some consternation in, in sweeping PAC dollars to put into RTA? If, if, if these are the primary, if these are the, the principal projects for the region, to me, I could see an argument to put all of our money towards those, those projects, including PAC dollars. But that's not what I sensed from the board in their conversations. And so I could see an argument, if there are other worthy and righteous causes or projects or expenses for the PAC dollars, I could see a plan that suggests to the board, well, you know, board, this is what we could get done if we moved off of the half cent and we considered maybe a, a 0.6%. And if we don't want to do that and if we're stuck with the half cent, then this is what our limitation is. I, I just, I just don't know why there's that feeling and maybe it's just me. Maybe I'm just reading too far into the board on the, on the use of PAC money for RTA projects. But I'll, I'll, I'll be quiet. Thanks.
Madam Chair, Shane, you know, I, I can't answer the reluctance that, that some of the folks have on that. What I can tell you is my sense is that we have been sweeping those dollars for so long, there's been no other capacity. There's been no other projects that can be brought forward that are not RTA related or, or completion of RTA. So this in essence flips that and, and makes it available. But I would also suggest to you to think about the fact that if, if it is in the plan, we're locked in, right? So if the projects are in the plan, we're locked into whatever the plan is. And if the regional dollars are analyzed or reviewed, and I'll even use the term distributed annually through a tip process, that gives you flexibility and that gives you flexibility to address unforeseen needs, unforeseen challenges that we may not have anticipated in the creation of the 20 year plan. So, so simplistically, that's how I would, I would suggest and I will try to make that pitch to the board.
Madam Chair, one last comment. I'm sorry, Madam Chair, one last comment on that. I, I think tying up PAC dollars, I think it hamstrings the region in addressing unforeseens. And I think, you know, so that's the compromise that we make if we, if we tie ourselves to advancing RTA dollars or RTA projects with PAC dollars. It limits our ability as a region and individually as region members to address unforeseens, new needs, new issues over that period of time. So, you know, I think that's worth considering as we contemplate tying our PAC dollars up for projects. And I'll, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Christina, then Terry and Jeff.
I have, I think, a couple of questions and a comment. One, the question is, this question is a little bit outside of this, but I do think it's pertinent to the discussion in terms of what gets presented to the voters and, and it's relative to the RTA One and what the voters approve. and what the voters approved. There was a, there was some discussion about what was in that program and what was actually delivered. And so, uh, the voters approve, and we've, and we've talked about how populations have changed over time, but there was a percentage delivered and I, we're curious, city is curious as to what has been delivered so far, what, how that compares to what was voted on, um, that 65% versus something less than that. So I'm, that's a question just for awareness. So I think it's important to know. My second question is what happened? And I don't think we finished the discussion on the distribution criteria for the arterial rehabilitation safety element, but I know that there was a discussion at our last meeting. Oh, did we?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay.
So we didn't.
I know there was a discussion in our last meeting that the two 10 dollars were going to go into that and then be distributed proportionally. So I don't think that's included in this piece. So that would have to be, it is?
It is, yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, let's just, we can, I think we put that to bed. Rick, can you outline where those dollars show up now? I think they were.
I just, okay.
I'm sorry, Christine, can you ask me a question again? What, the SR210?
This position of the two 10 dollars.
In just the 10 year aspect of it, so it's all been reassigned into the categories laid out, the arterial rehabilitation, um, small increase into the transit. I, I don't know that it went on a specific breakout. I may be not answering your question though.
So I was looking at, there was 50 million for the two, two 10 projects. And a portion of that was county attributed it and a portion of that was city attributed. And I think we had said it would go into the arterial rehabilitation.
Correct.
And so I would expect that that 37 would reflect those and then the remainder would be.
I see. Ma- Madam Chair, yeah, I understand. Uh, so not exactly, because the, the, the 10 year plan is what's on that blue piece of paper. So, or tha- that's all, there's no other money for that.
Okay.
The 20 year plan, the RTA next plan, which is, has the tweaks on it. That's where those dollars went, both to the county, I think, safety and, uh, the, the city's pavement rehabilitation.
So I think we're just going to need to.
Those are different.
Yeah.
They're, they're different. Okay. So what we can show you on.
Okay, great, great.
Yep.
And then my last, um, is a comment and it's regarding the transit element. Um, the high capacity transit improvements is more of a project than a program. Um, and so dividing that by two, um, could be a challenge, um, for us delivering that project. So just a comment, I don't know how it gets remedied. It's a conversation, but I wanted to make sure to put that on the radar, that that's not a, not a program, it's a project. Okay, thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, thank you. So I, I think I do fully understand what Mike is proposing here. And again, I, I, I don't know that, um, I don't know that I completely agree with it because I'm, I'm not a hundred percent clear on where the, how, how the monies break out. So if I, if I understand correctly, Mike, um, the PAG dollars are not necessarily required to be utilized in, uh, RTA next type projects. A jurisdiction may choose to do that if, uh, that's their priority. An interchange may still be our priority. And so utilizing whatever PAG dollars we're, uh, we, we get, we may say we want to use it on this particular project. I guess I, I would like to see, and I know, uh, I think it was Carmine maybe that brought it up, the, the breakdown of what the rehab and safety monies go to and, and what the, uh, roadway, well, I guess the rehab and safety is, 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 is a calculation based on population and whatever. But the, uh, 50.5, uh, per year, wha- what the breakdown of that is, because I do think that that also matters when it comes to the distribution of, uh, the PAG dollars. And certainly the PAG dollars are going to be based on people coming forward with a project that's ready to go, uh, proposed project. This is what we want to do. This is why it's impactful for our community, for the region, whatever the case may be. But it would be helpful to kind of see how all that breaks down, uh, to me. I don't know at what point we're going to talk about transit, but I do think, and at, at the risk of sounding like a broken record, uh, there's an enormous amount of money spent on transit. And, um, I don't know that we've done much in the way of determining how efficiently those dollars are being utilized. And at some point, I think that that's an important conversation. If we're going to spend, um, nearly a hundred million dollars a year in transit. Um, and I grant a, a, a good chunk of that is coming from a single jurisdiction. I get that, that's their, wha- whatever that they want us, but if we're going to spend that kind of money, I think it would be helpful to know, um, how those monies are being spent based on the, the utilization, the number of, um, actual riders, not the number of rides, but the actual number of riders. And how much we're spending, how much are we spending on a, for, for a person to ride the bus every year? And is there a better way to utilize those monies to accomplish the same thing? Or maybe even a better thing? I don't know. Thank you.
Jeff? Jeff, you had your hand up, but you took it down. Are you still looking for a question or no?
I did take it down, but, uh, I guess the, what I was, again, my understanding on the, uh, putting in a 37 million in as rehab and safety, that's basically guaranteeing that on a per capita or, or on the formula basis to each of the, the agencies to spend on, um, to spend on those, those categories. And then as long as that HERF PAG money is competitive and not swept. And, uh, and I know we can't put that necessarily in the ballot. We had talked about that, but I think one, one thing I do like is that the 37 million at least would be on the ballot. It would guarantee those types of dollars to be shared amongst the, uh, the jurisdictions. And if, if we're making the, the, the guarantee or the commitment that the, the regional dollars are still a competitive process, uh, I think it, it meets a lot of the, uh, the issues we, uh, we had brought up. I do, I do agree with, uh, what Terry just had said too. I mean, uh, you know, I'm not sure if we've done a great analysis on, uh, on transit and its effectiveness. It, it seems like, uh, monies do get put in without, uh, much, uh, much discussion. Uh, so I think there is some more, uh, more, uh, consideration for that too. So thank you.
Thank you. Shane and then Sam.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. I need to jump off for a hard stop. I really appreciate the dialogue. I, I'll, I'll echo Terry's comments about the need to do some more analysis on the, on the transit component. I, I think as we're looking at, um, you know, the value add for the dollars that we're spending, uh, that, that kind of analysis definitely needs to be put on the table. But I appreciate the clarification, if you know, that, uh, that Jeff just put on the table. You know, if, if the, if the regional dollars are not like locked in, um, on a plan in front of the voters, but, um, we know that we can compete as, as regional members in the PAG tip for these kinds of projects. Um, that makes, that makes a lot of sense. So I got to jump, but Mike, I appreciate all your hard work, uh, and staff. You guys are awesome.
Shane.
Can you, one second?
Shane, thank you, I appreciate that and you're welcome. Um, it's not me, it's really the staff that do a great job. So, so Shane, the, wha- what I'm struggling with is how do we explain to the voter in Sarita, what the value is of the RTA next ask? If we don't show somehow the regional dollars available to address some of the projects that are in your area? That's what I'm nervous about. I mean, you can help me with that. I'm not, I, I'm not trying to anticipate what your voters will say or not say. I'm just trying to help you with that story and, and, and the other jurisdictions as well. So can you maybe help me with that a little bit?
So the idea here, Mike, no, I, I, I honestly, I can't help you. Uh, because, because it's something that we're all wrestling with, right? It, it really is. I've had these conversations with my mayor. Do we include projects, um, specifically calling them out? Do we not? We understand and appreciate the impact that has on our ability to be flexible and respond to unanticipated needs. I've got a few that seem like they're, they're popping up already and, uh, and certainly wasn't contemplated even a year or two ago. So, um, you know, that flexibility is really important. Getting it across the finish line is really important with the voters. I, I think we can go a long way in the pavement reconstruction area, if we can identify areas on, you know, in, in and throughout the region where those pavement preservation or reconstruction dollars are going to benefit and bless, you know, our, our, our region and our, and our, and our, uh, our residents. I, I think that goes a long way as well. And it's for the first 10 years, right? So, um, you know, after that, we start showing, you know, regular arterial projects or corridor projects. We're wrestling with the same question right now, Mike. I, I wish I could come up with a, a solid answer, but that, that issue of tying up flexibility for 10 years is a, is a tough one as well. Thanks. And, and I do have to go, I appreciate it. Sorry about that.
Excuse me, Sam.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to respond to, um, you know, some of the comments about transit. Um, and I do think, you know, we maybe should spend an entire TMC beating up this transit item. Because I've heard now both at this table and at the RTA board table that there are some jurisdictions that don't understand the value of the transit investment. Well, the RTA staff shared that the value of the transit investment is mostly outside the city limits in the county, in the town of Marana, town of Royal Valley and town of Sarita. If there's not an interest for continuing that service, then we should probably look at reducing that investment in Sun Shuttle and Sun Shuttle Dial Ride and reallocating that to the fixed route service for Sun Tran, which last year we had, um, over close to 17 million rides we offered. So I, I, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm hearing mixed messages in that there's concern that there's too much being invested in transit, but yet most of the investment is going in the outer areas of, of the region. And so if that's an imbalance, then let's, let's rebalance that and get, get the dollars invested where the service is actually needed. That's all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So I think we're kind of starting to spin a bit. Do you want to, I'm trying to get a sense, I'm sorry, Carmine.
Oh, Jezz, I, I appreciate you trying to move along. Um, on the, the blue sheet, right, that shows the regional dollars, uh, that totals 496 million. Yet in, in the sheet that, that shows the, the plan, it looks like there's only 426. So why is that?
Madam Chair, thank you. Um, so if, if you remember, I said that the first couple of years, there was less money available because we've got some, uh, re, or some federal commitments. And so it tapers down. And so that's just an average, basically. So the 426 is more accurate.
If, if I can just ask a, a follow up and, and Mike, maybe you said this and I'm not sure. Those regional dollars right now show as being allocated beginning in, in 27. And so there's dollars from those sources that have been allocated to complete RTA one project. So i- is there a rollover compo- where, where do those dollars go that are currently slated to help complete RTA one? Where are they in this?
Madam Chair, so, um, Carmine, if you, if you think about it, th- the dollars are that 50.5 million above it. So what happens is instead of it coming from the regional money for 27, eight, nine, it comes out of the TPT. That's all it did is basically just move money that was coming from the regional, uh, dollars. I moved, I moved the TPT to cover those.
And, and if I may then, so if, if the TPD is covering those dollars, where then are the dollars? Are, are they rolled in this aggregate total?
Yes, so.
So the rollover dollars are, are reflected in, in this annual average? The dollars that were going to RTA one projects that are now under this proposal, that, that 50.5 are going to be covered by TPT, where, where are those dollars?
Okay. Great, great question. Are you asking about fund balance? Or are you asking about new revenue? Cause those are different.
But yeah, it would be fund balance. Cause that, that's what we've, we've said we would utilize for completing RTA.
That's correct. So the fund balance is still allocated to RTA one. So thi- this is a snapshot from 20, from July 1 of 26th on. So this is new revenue. So all the fund balance is allocated to the completion of RTA one. And so that 500 million that's on this sheet at the very top.
That's the net.
That's the net. So the, if you remember, if you remember, the, the total cost of completion of RTA one on, on, basically on June 30th is about 1.1 billion. So we've, the rest of that is fund balance, both TPT and HERF and STBG. Okay. Well, I think some Tylenol. Um, oh, question. Oh. So, um, we, we need to, we need to ultimately come in on, on some recommendation. I'd, I'd like for the TMC, I would ask that the TMC would, would, would come to some recommendation on what we're talking about here. Just a reminder, related to this conversation, uh, I believe it was Mayor Murphy asked that we also bring back some policy, uh, considerations. And so one thing for sure, I, I would appreciate is for you all to establish or direct the TMC policy committee or subcommittee, subcommittee. Per my note, if you could do that, um, in, in the form of a notion, we'll, we'll work on, on our end to get that done. So that's, that's one thing that should be pretty straightforward. We gave you the benefit of some of the notes that Jim's been taken on, and Dan on, on maybe some changes to the, those policies, so that they, they've got a starting point. They got a framework at least to start with. So that, that's one thing. Quite frankly, you, you, this has been immensely helpful in terms of, of hammering out some of these things. Um, even though there wasn't a decision necessarily, I wanted to go over this with you in terms of what it could look like. And if there are flaws in it, uh, that's what we really need to know. I mean, if, if, and there's still some pieces we need to work out and we'll massage and we'll get you some, some pieces that, that, that you've asked for. But generally speaking, does this overall direction make sense to you based on the conversations that we've had? If, if the answer is no, then I, I need to know that too, so we can.
And I think what, what I'm looking at that, what we have discussed today in some ways and, and elements for our board is one, I think, uh, is the revenue piece, right? Are we, are we comfortable with the way that we've established the, um, 125 for 10 years, right? Piece. Are we comfortable, excuse me, with the allocation of the funds for the arterial road payment rehabilitation and safety programs as described in that language? We had some discussion about making sure we're understanding the updated population figures and that we will continue to update those through the plan with a minimum of 1%. Excuse me. We've talked about, and we made sure we had the environmental piece in there and that we have clarification that, uh, the regional dollars are separate and would be competitively available to partners in the region. And then at some point, we're going to park and come back to two things right now. Maybe having a conversation about transit, uh, globally and then the establishment of the policy subcommittee to look at the policy issues. Are those issues?
Madam Chair, yes. The, the one thing I will mention, Terry asked about the, and, and so did Shane, trying to develop metrics for transit. We, we, we'll make an effort to do that. I know we, we've got some information that can help. I don't know that I can finish that within a week, um, but, but we'll give it, we'll give it an effort. I, I, but I think it's going to be important, but I think it's going to be important, Terry, because I think in order to put some of those issues to bed, we gotta, we gotta get that. And so if, if we can give me a little grace on that, we, we'll work really hard to get that, get that out, because I, I think that's going to be imperative for, for this group, but then also for the, the board to hear it. Sam suggested maybe we do a, a, a separate conversation just on transit. That would be great. Um, I don't know that we can pull that off before the 15th. And so if we just have a placeholder for now, that we can sort of generally agree with, just, um, bored to death, bored to death. Um, and then I've got a little announcement I need to make here in a minute, but, um, but, so I, I just, I just wanted to make sure, I, I don't want to give you the, the rest of it. I think we can pull off, but, but that's going to be a tall order.
We, but I think that's why I said we parked it. We know we need an analysis. We'll figure out when staff is ready for us to review. Do you need any action from us on recommendations regarding the, uh, the revenues and/or any of these programs? Have you heard? Have you heard the working of the master?
Madam Chair, as long as I, I take away that there's, there's no huge issues with what's in front of you, that there's no flies in the ointment, if you will, I, I'm, I'm good with that. I don't need specific direction because we're going to keep moving to try to get you all the information. I don't want to put you in a position where you, you make a final call and then, and then that's done. I just, I, I just really need the feedback and I need to make sure that we're on the right track in general to try to get something back to the board. That's all.
So Madam Chair, I think his, his question's a good question. I don't know I have a great answer. I think in, in theory, based on everything I'm seeing, like I feel like it's going in the right direction. I think as long as PAG dollars are available to the regions, they're not tied necessarily to a, an RTA next project, but could be if that's what a jurisdiction so decided to utilize it for. It would seem like those would be priorities, but again, I, I think it needs to be jurisdictional privilege and prerogative. So I think overall in theory, I'm fine with it. I do think at some point, I, I missed what Sam was saying about transit. And I, I thought I heard a number that sounded amazing, i- if that's, if that's the number I heard. But so I, I, I think having the conversation, how much money we're putting into transit, why it went from 32 to 37 or 35, whatever it ended up going to. I mean, tho, those, those are dollars that could go to roadway projects, safety projects, corridor projects, et cetera.
Thank you. Oh, I'm so, I'm sorry, Jeff.
Hey, Madam Chair, so I guess my question or just for some clarity, when we're looking at, at this sheet right here and we've got, you know, these construction start periods and it's the first through the second periods, is that the first and second period of this sheet?
Madam Chair, Jeremy, so that sheet is 10 years. So that's the first, first and second period. So there's no third or fourth period on that other sheet. There's no funding beyond, there's no funding beyond the first 10 years.
Okay. So that, that, those projects that were basically taken out of the RTA and now into just using regional funds, that's later on out, af, outside of these 10 years?
That's correct. Not necessarily.
Okay. But we're not saying we're locking them in between first and second period.
So it's, it's good and it's good that ADOT is asking that question. So sort of. So if you, if you look at the, the way that the dollars, so let, let's use an example here.
I, I was just looking at like, say, Cortero.
Let's use Cortero Road, okay? Cortero Road is not planned to be funded from the RTA money. Okay. In this, on this piece of paper, in this example, the suggestion is that that could be funded out of regional money. The regional money is available starting in '27. So those dollars could be made available to start that project in '27. Okay, so that would be period one.
Okay.
Okay. But now let's go to another one. Let, let's look at Tangerine just for, for ease there. So Tangerine Interchange, that's item 12 or project 12, okay? That is not shown in periods one or two. That's not shown right this minute as RTA funding or regional funding in periods one and two. So if you look at that 57 million, which is the RTA budget, that would be in period three or four. So that's in a future, a future part of this, not in the first 10 years.
Okay.
That's just this, this two examples that are, that are there. But as a part of the regional conversation, in, in terms of the PAG dollars, the regional dollars, either one of those, those projects could flip or they could change in terms of scope. They could change in terms of the magnitude of the RTA, excuse me, of the, of the regional money that would be allocated to them.
Well, I think that was the question is, is when we start seeing those RAC funds come in at the end of the year and we program, you know, what we feel the priority is through the region on I-10, I-19 in, in the PAG area. Whether or not dollars get contributed or not, I think that's, that was the question is, does it have to? Are we saying it has to be contributed in '27? But I think you answered the question. And I think that would be something we would bring back to the region. We would vote on and look, look at, correct?
Madam Chair, that's absolutely correct. And beyond that, I would also suggest to you that that would be an annual process because we're, we're more than likely going to go to an annual tip. And so the development of that would hopefully coincide with the ADOT plan and they would match. But that conversation happens annually versus once for the 20 years.
Okay.
I think that's the difference.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, good. Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think we had an inquire, inquiry early on that you're going to have a breakdown of where the $490 million is going to be allocated to. I mean, it's just asked too. So whether that drags us out as to how that, you know, is vetted and everybody's comfortable with it, it would be nice to know.
Got it. Thank you. What do you?
I need.
I'm, I'm looking at his notes to me.
The Madam Chair, I, I'm comfortable if you are. I think we've, we've talked through it. Staff, is there any question or any direction that you all need or at this point you guys are hearing? Anything in the back that you all heard that we need to talk through?
And I, I just, I want to be clear about this because I think a big issue, again, we go back to the beginning, is about the revenues. And I was hearing more and more comfort that people are looking at an okay projection to lock it at 125 for the 10 years. Right, okay. I think that's.
I think we're good. Yeah, thank you. That's good. So, so Madam Chair, I, I do want to let you know I, I will not be here next Wednesday. I have to take a trip that was planned many months ago when I was wearing shorts and a T-shirt. And I'm going to go see some family members and I, I can't change that. But I can attend remotely. The staff is well-versed and can, can, we'll, we'll keep moving. But I just can't be here in person. And so I just want to let you know, I do think it's important that we do meet and talk through, hopefully finalize some of this, at least in a format that can be recommended to the board. Because the board then meets on Friday, the 15th, and I will be back for that.
I think, I think we do need to meet next Wednesday. I think we've got a lot of direction to staff and some clarifications that need to come back and we can look at that. And then hopefully we do have some policy work. Jim has sent me the information in our bylaws and such about how we establish a policy committee. We will do so, convene that group and hopefully we'll get it going before the 13th. So we'll have some feedback as well. So stay tuned for emails on that one. What else? For the good of the order. Sam, anybody online? Questions hanging that we want staff to be ready to visit with us on the 13th? Okay. Thank you all very much. Meeting adjourned.